Yeah.
Are we starting? Have a certain.
Yeah.
For.
And Brian.
It is five thirty, so we'll call this the order. We're gonna be generally.
All right.
Yeah.
One nation.
Supervisors of the inspection. Jake and Tom, I love time. Supervisors of the better. Captain, we have here to the opposing, the board, your order. Five hours. Okay, and I think that's. And Julia has a good project agenda here as well as our engineer. Public comments on the agenda. See any better on whether or not this I'm sure that includes this was called. But it's uh sole purpose of discussing these regulations. Specifically parking regulations. Um, and I know a lot of us have a hard start at six fifteen, since it's gonna be. A second to talk about. Parking regulations and ordinance specifically on the commercial side, but. Tentatively on the. Uh residential side with commercial uses involved. So. Robert, I think you hashed it, and you wanna go over the impetus of this?
Yeah, I can go over what I have here and also mention that I've been doing my. In formal survey with my tape measure in the car every time I stop someplace. Generally, both commercial and residential seem to be. In the county around nine feet by eighteen is the accepted amount. There are a few places where it's ten feet, but whereas ten feet, it seems like it's awfully large. So I think we're probably better. Um going with nine feet. And um, Michael at Barry suggested and we've and also. Uh John Custer confirmed the trend is towards. Um eliminating. Um minimal spaces working building and letting the. Uh owners of building developers decide what they need. Uh as long as it's enough. And um. We have now um between section three oh five of uh. Chapter twenty seven of ordinance and then section four oh four H. Um a huge list of uh. You know, requirements for everything from resort development to lodging to gas within service station, et cetera. And um I think it's an excessive. Um also, uh a point brought up. And the black community of the zoning hearing board was um three oh eight. Which is about incentivized mixed use developments. Why does the parking have to be in the back? It's a good question. I don't know why in that uh section of the ordinances. Aside from any other completely mixed use that's in the back.
For a say. I think it's for a say.
Well, it can be, uh let's say it's it's nicer if it works. And they have in the question before the zoning hearing board is a situation where. Can't really work that way. Because of the configuration a lot, trying to protect the neighbors, all kinds of things. So we saw it came up.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
On that one. That's one has to go before the zoning hearing board?
Well, it is before the zoning hearing.
No, I mean, and on a regular basis, but my understanding was a number of parking spots we've I thought in the past we've. Got that through waivers, yeah.
Well, but this is only, this is I'm just speaking specifically in the battery quarter, the three oh eight. Uh C three, which is.
In the zoning.
Parking should be provided to the side and rear of the principal building director. I I I'm not sure why that especially snuck in here, but. What's good for the zoning hearing board is one development where it's it's a. Let's say more acceptable to have it in front for various reasons, including the neighbors, including the. The configuration of the site, including um steep slopes. So it's a question of. We might prefer it, but we should be having it in the ordinance where. Um this is the only way it can be unless we go into the zoning here.
Well, I guess that might be the essential question on that one. Should it be? Indeliminated by waiver for instances like that, or should it be, you know?
Yeah, I would prefer waivers. Anyway. Um I'm just bringing it up. And um. Other than that. It's. All of these of it.
Want to hand it in package?
It's um, it's all of it. All the required areas are now under uh. Four oh three. Austin parking loading design standards. I think we can go on the groupie this. Let's say, when I started speaking here, the. Uh the question of whether we should even have commercial requirements or not, this brought up by. Both Mike and John Trustler, which. Uh maybe something we don't need anymore, very less of. Those are my remarks.
Let's go next.
Oh, I was waiting for that. Well, what what are all other tensions to other municipalities? Are they are they backing down? Do they? Changing things?
It seems to be a national trend to not restrict anymore. Commercial law string parking and leave it to the. Uh the people that are building the building. They seem, as as John said, John Trustler, they seem to be the best. Uh source of information of what they really need because. The cash business, they're not gonna have fewer parking spaces than they have customers.
To be fair, it seems as though it's a it's a massive trend in that direction in urban areas. Lots and lots of cities are getting rid of those requirements because they're they're further incentivized to do it because. It encourages, if you have less parking level, encourages public transportation, it's. It makes the roads less busy because you're actually reducing the number of cars that are out and about, so it's. Not necessarily as relevant in in rural areas, but that's not to say that all the other reasons that are that they're doing for aren't. Appropriate as well. It's probably just not as. Urgent of an issue as as it is sort of in in more suburban areas. Also, you're seeing, you know, with COVID, like more drive-throughs, so I think about the Dairy Queen all the time. I don't have ever seen anyone park on the left side of that. Block, that parking spot ever.
I'm not even sure before. I don't even sure if they parked there.
No, I mean, I'm I'm saying, I I had some thoughts there. One was more people doing drive-throughs and therefore. They might actually staying at these places and then um. And then also that as an example, Dairy Queen.
Well, the same looks gonna be the same problem, but I I look, I view it as. As a permanent use and a non-permanent use. Not the parking, not whatever. The permanent use, which we should probably still keep. Resident is the residential one. That's not going to change.
Right.
All right, but commercial uses will change depending on and what. What the old zoning ordinance has always have in them, ours included. You know, you know, it presupposes a a fixed in place, like a, you know, like a a static. Like a static living here, like say, like nothing will ever change, right? And that's the trouble. With putting in parking spaces in for whoever the first person that develops that use first. Well, say it looks like the same, but those places aren't gonna be used, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
And that's not even as bad as it probably could have been if I remember correctly. But who knows, it's parking all the way over like two twelve nine and walking pressure.
Well, the problem with their issue with this table is item number two at the very last page. Cause that's where you when you have these. Multi uh new properties, specifically multi-commercial. And what it are says is you have to accumulate. So you do the restaurant, there's grocery store, you have to add all of those departments up, which is why you're at a credit card where you have this. Massive parking lot because there's. All those retail facilities in that and then want to stretch to your virtual reality is we're not all using. That space at the same time.
Not even close at the same time.
Right, they're they're totally even ours, which.
Thirty percent.
I mean, anything that part of that part, that second sentence for number two seems like it needs to.
Three.
On the last page of the of of chapter twenty seven.
Where it said use the.
For multiple facilities to use their cumulative total, all of these included.
The other thing that we should discuss is when I speak students between residential and commercial. Where the residential is at different times of the day than the commercial. Who decides that? Is that something that the? The commercial, the commercial tenant or the commercial developer knows better than we do or not? And it's it's kind of tough. I mean, I think the only way you get through that is have. A traffic engineer do the impact study and say, this is how many you think you need. But um. I I I don't know what we do there either.
Well, I think the the permanent use residential is gonna end up having to take precedence or whatever else we do with the commercial. Cause it because that's the because those are the ones that no matter whatever the time is or whatever the date is, whether it's a holiday or they're, you know, fourth of July, they're still there. So you got you got to start there and then whenever you're commercially using it, then you see any, then you see from that and.
But they're not there all day.
Well, they may not.
Well. It's happening someday. It's something that came to the commercial. That's why I say I think it's up to a graphic engineer to advise on what it really need, what is really needed in any specific situation.
I hope you can air toward the residential because they're going to always require us, you know, how many is required for them is the question because they think, you know, some places are one, one and a half, some three. Point eight, point five. Depends on the facilities around.
Well, that's why I say traffic engineer is probably the best source of information.
Well, true, we want we want less of a permissive structure because I mean, looking at this. If I'm reading this correctly, it's you five spaces for each. Alley with a bowling alley. That's like, that's unbelievable. But. Yeah. I mean, most of these seem to be so specific that they maybe were tied to some old industry standard, some sort of. Add a date book. What it says, if it's not in here, it's a zoning officer to. Be most similar. Right?
I'd like to piggyback on what Robert said initially about the. You know, they the developer would probably know what they need, and I would agree with that if it's a franchise or somebody that's an established developer. But if it's a a mom and pop shop, isn't. If they don't have a lot of money, they're gonna wanna do it as cheap as possible, but I'm gonna say I need three parking spaces when in reality they'd be ten. And what they're maybe they they could be thinking as well, you know, my neighbor's not gonna be here, I'll park in his lot. And we want to try to avoid that.
Yeah.
Because that will that'll end up being some kind of a feud between two different businesses when somebody else is parking in their lot. So and we notice there needs to be some way uh in the ordinance that. Whether it's conditional or. We force them to use a traffic engineer or some way that we can prove that what they're trying to do is 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 valid and makes sense.
Yeah.
And secondly, to to piggyback on what what uh what Scott has said about. You know, what it is today, maybe not what it is tomorrow, we should allocate. Space for future parking if it's not accurate or if you use changes. And uh the additional, you know, it could just be this area is designated as you future parking. Or it could be they have a situation where, you know, once a year they have overflow, it could be the parking on those uh pavers with the the grass.
Right, they don't make the pavement from uh at the outset.
Yeah, 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 right, right, right. Like future paving, but it could be, what it what is, what is what they have the pavers down, but it's not. It's not a curvy, it's the water can go through.
Right, I don't.
You know that little square. Yeah, could be something like that or the overflow parking that happens infrequently.
Well, that's another thing, if we were gonna do that, maybe we have to tie it into um the um. Um what we call the, not the open space, the uh. Green space requirement.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that would be the open space requirement.
Yeah, so we can say that, okay, if you have so much um that you'll put into uh. Let's say lock and block or whatever, tiles.
Yeah.
Um it could be paved in the future or not now or maybe never paid, but maybe used for parking overflow. Can we get some credit on what the the green space?
Maybe a way to address some of your concerns, Dave, would be. For. I agree to keep uh for residential uses. The requirement may for the the other commercial and actually they call these, you know, educational use, some of these. Um not necessarily specifically commercial, but all these other uses. Keep this form as recommended. Number.
I agree.
And and then and then build on that as, or there's kind of a way that. I I for me, this whole thing about when I looked at the the factors project and I was just sort of horrified at the size of that massive parking lot. That I don't mean to say it was parking lot.
No, but in the in the rest of the ones.
I know there was. But I just wanna, I I just wanna make sure that developers that um have projects that are going in. Are putting in the number of spaces that they need and not doing any more just because of what you're doing. That's.
So the question is, what have you seen in terms of where there's other. Of locations, government municipalities that you think would work for us here?
I have not seen any changes, but a lot of municipalities are having the same sketch we are.
Yeah.
As far as numbers, we don't have those numbers at hand. But we could always do more research.
Correct.
You know, um but you know, the commercial is a big problem, especially, you know, a big box store or retail center where. The timing of these people going in and out or somebody's parking and they're visiting all of those first.
Yeah.
You know, and the rest of the parking lot is empty.
In most cases, did you see any deviations from the recommendations or the standards? Are they? Decided by a zoning hearing board or the governing body?
It's they're always, because they're in the zoning ordinance, there's always a variance, so we would have to go before the zoning hearing.
Is there anything that precludes us from your house making it part of land development ordinance?
Yeah.
Man, I don't think it's necessary in every case, but I think that. It becomes substantially more costly to automatically need the zoning hearing board here, you know, any change. I mean, they're designed to be for. Major changes.
Right. I mean, I haven't seen anything where you couldn't put parking within your subdivision in the ordinance. So if that's something that could be thought, no.
You could do it that way, or you could make it that he had a conditional use, but that's a real actual. Spot where a conditioner, you know, the the reason we have all of those, you know, we had a problem with all the other condition we use support. It was, you know, basically for Jim Innes type things that they're back in here for. But not in the initial development part of it, you know, they're they're, you know, the developer was asking for, you know, seventy five parking. Spaces. You know, that can be, you know, that'd be the condition of doing.
Yeah.
But that that's an actual wood use.
Yeah.
For, you know, I think I have another example right here of manufacturing. I remember when um. What's his name?
Byon.
Byon came and and they're saying, listen, this whole facility is gonna be. Automated automated.
Right.
So the fact that you're saying we need one parking spot every thousand square foot gross feed was crazy because I'm gonna have this giant empty.
Yeah.
Paved parking lot. And I just think that these things, these changes are gonna continue to happen all the time.
Right.
Well. Did he have to go before the zoning hearing board to get that changed?
Yeah, a couple of appearances. I'm I too.
I getting getting back to that versus um conditional uses, I I agree with Jacob. The zoning hearing board should be used for uh real uh questions. Um that uh we haven't found any solution to uh just general things like, you know, we can do on traditional uses and. That I think from what I've observed, the zoning hearing board, it's it would be lately. It seems like they're doing the bushwhacking for us, you know, they're cutting your trail. It shouldn't have to be in that position. We should have more things that can be decided by the planning commission and the. The supervisors as conditional uses. Um rather than having to go through that process all the time.
I agree, but I don't want every subtraction of five parking spaces to be a forty thousand dollar. Legal endeavor.
Oh, why would I do that?
I mean, just historically, there's nine hundred thousand spending, the cost of legal fees and. I mean, our added engineering and then also. You know, stenographer, all the.
Are you talking about for the zoning hearing board? Are you talking about for traditional use?
I can add one second here. I ran the numbers, roughly speaking, for conditional uses. Uh it runs the township and the developer just under eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I I'd rather be part of a settlement to get avoid special uses because they just are gonna cost more and I don't think it's necessarily fair. You know, if we're going to be doing this for aesthetics and other reasons, I don't wanna see someone have to pay eight grand to have. Less funds, they can do it as part of their land development plan.
Okay. So why don't we make that up?
Well, I'm not even agreeing with that. I think that you should probably have. The conditional use part of it for things such as your your uh. You know, your basically your grass paving block overflow stuff.
But doesn't that? That's right. Does it have to go to the zoning hearing board?
Not initially use, no, then it goes through the elected representative on the process. That that's the process that I would prefer.
So is the other part used in zoning or is it?
It's in zoning.
What can we go down zoning and put it?
Well, I don't know. You have to ask Ron that one, but I just know it's there, which means that. If it's if it's in zoning, you're gonna have to do, you're you're you're. Your relief from zoning, there's only gonna be variants or special exception. Now, variants, you're already starting at the answer is no.
No.
And then you fight uphill from there. All right, obvious exceptions will start to get to those backwards, but if you're literally use it, if the project comes before the body of us and then goes to them. Had ignition on it if there are, you know.
That's the way that you should be.
I think that's the way it should be as well, Dave.
So I'd like to ask you this, Ron.
Ron? Ron, are you with this meeting?
I am here.
Okay. Dave brought up the question of whether all the parking regulations could go in separate chapters, uh in the zoning chapter.
That they. If if you want to make them a standalone ordinance, I suppose you can. Uh you can also, if you want, take them out of the zoning completely and put them all in. The subdivision and land development ordinance so that the supervisors can make the call, but. That won't apply for the smaller projects, I don't think. I think you still may need something in zoning and then you have that, you know, that conflict going on. Scott's suggestion about the conditional use, that's a good one too. I mean, conditional use is that the use is permitted. The founding fathers and mothers have decided the use is permitted and as long as they meet the ordinance requirements. They get the you, they get the uh use unless the objectors can show. To the level more than the ordinary course that the public health or welfare is going to be affected. So you can, you know, do that too. Now again, I'm not sure if there's a magic bullet here because there's so many different. Not only so many different types of uses that require parking. But the 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 mixture of where we're gonna put these sections and do we keep them in zoning or do we keep them in? Saldo, if you keep them in zoning for the smaller projects, if you will, that may not meet land development. They should then be consistent, I kind of think, with what you have in your saldo. Although the argument could be made, well, it's a different kind of project, so you don't have to keep them the same, so. It's a difficult, difficult deal. Uh I'm not sure. If we just throw everything out and we're, you know, throwing out the baby with the bathwater and do what Mike had said. Uh in one of his emails back in February, just saying, get rid of everything or just get rid of minimums and just put something in that. The individuals would, you know, would do. I I don't know if the developers, the big developers, as was said. Are smart enough to know what they want. Sometimes they don't, and the smaller developers. My mom and pop, they say, they also have issues.
Right, I say, I'd like to say it's smart enough to know what they want. Really, what by having things like this schedule that we have here really, really prevents. Basically lazy engineering. And lays friendly and lazy and lazy legal, and they do not actually put a pen in the paper that, okay, we got this this year, we need. You know, six hundred and seventy five parking spaces there. Now, now we can move on. We don't have to think about that. No, I'm sorry, we don't wanna think about that, but the order that says. We can have six hundred and seventy five spaces and and there we go.
We have six hundred and seventy five.
So they can say there's there's a bit of longer period of time.
They only need two hundred.
And they only need two hundred in reality, yes, yes.
So we have four hundred and seventy five extra spaces in our township that are fit in place of what could be.
Right. So you have what, there's nothing black top doing, nothing other than.
Yeah, they have ex-forewater.
Yeah, all of that, right.
Yeah.
It wasn't fair to have everything consensus, at least on. Part of this is that we want more control directly over it rather than going to zoning hearing board. We want it more so. In the salvo ordinance.
Well, I think we also just heard Ron, the problem would be for smaller.
I mean, I think you can keep it separate, but I think we're we're all thinking about other things that are gonna have four hundred extra spaces, not twenty out of fifty.
Right.
Well, if you put it in salvo, it doesn't get to the conditional use, right, Ron?
No, no.
Right, that's the zoning thing.
And then zoning, you would need that, and in fact, I heard someone say at the beginning of the meeting, well, let's see. If we can rely upon the traffic engineers as people who may be able to give us some direction. My concern is if those traffic engineers. Are using the dated results. Or jaded results that were used to establish the ordinance requirements in the in the beginning, I'm not sure if that helps us. But I'm not enough of an engineer to know how. Those things may change over the years.
But our engineer like to come in and then.
I mean, I my main opposition to conditional uses is I don't think everybody should have to pay. Having less spaces to clutter up the township.
I don't think, I'm just curious how, except for conditional use was for. Like I was saying, I'm trying to think how you would, what use are you looking to have conditions set upon it? The use is less of something. I don't know if you can do that.
That's what it sounds like to me, man.
If you're asking for conditional use for parking, cause then someone will put bill parking in, right? I just don't know how it would work. From a conditional use perspective, because that tends to be the use of the of the property or the use of, you're not asking for, you're asking for a non-use. I don't wanna use that part.
And that's why I like waivers because they're fundamentally, you know, easier. I mean, we can, we can keep both. If we separate the types of uses, like I don't. Want, you know, a shop that's supposed to have a ten, you know, to need a conditional use to make sure, you know. They want their ten instead of the twenty. Like, I don't think that's necessary. I don't think that's fair, right? But. I don't know.
Oh, you can. Uh Jacob, you you can also state or put in the ordinance, if you wish, that. You know, the, there will be a trigger. There will be a trigger for that conditional use depending upon, I don't know, maybe the. Square footage of the building in question or the type of use that's gonna be used, et cetera, so that. Perhaps not everyone needs to jump through that hoop, uh, if they haven't met that minimum requirement, if you will.
Well, then it should probably be proportional rather than an absolute number, right?
Yeah, I'm, you know, because some things may not. Fall under the saddle, like, let's see, if you talk about a mom and pop deli market, whatever. They're only gonna be developing on a lot that already exists, they're not gonna be doing anything. Much more significant than that, and you know, how many lots or how many parking spaces are are they gonna need?
I wish, uh, one person is missing from this meeting. Uh, is a traffic engineer who could explain to us how they calculate things? We have to know, um, rather than depending on our orders, do they have some way that. They look at things different than we do and say how much parking should be required and for what reasons?
A- and that may be a basis, not to kick the can down the road and delay it, but that may be a basis perhaps for another. Joint meeting in the near future where the traffic engineer comes and and answers some of those questions.
Okay, I'm here.
Sure.
Questions, comments?
Hey, we've gotten my other idea, we just, are you ready for this?
Yeah.
Most of our townships and our commercial stuff, you know, like, is gonna come back to us. In a in a redevelopment phase, probably in the next ten or fifteen years.
Yes.
Which means there's already something there.
Yeah.
Which means, what if we incentivize redevelopment by letting them take out parking space?
That's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think again, you have to think about the size, so one of one of the things I was.
Yeah.
But one of the things I worry about that is, if you have a. A building, if there's a change of use somewhere, that really wasn't designed for a lot of people and, uh, under whichever one of these has very few parking apartments. And then switch it over to one that does require a lot of parking, that is where I see. Some issues with just getting rid of it entirely, because then some will say, well, I really wanna put a restaurant in. So I'm gonna put a restaurant in, even though really I should have an extra ten parking spots. Um, but because I don't have them and there's the or the the, so I'm just require it. Um, I'm just gonna do it anyway, and then you start having.
That was my concern, where they now start parking on the street or parking on the grass or parking their neighbors and.
Which, well, I also, I don't necessarily think that it should be completely thrown out, I think there should be some level of control, but. And do, I I think it's crazy to have to spend eight thousand dollars to to say, I mean, that's. On average, but it's spent a significant amount of money to do something that we want someone to do.
You know, to me, this all boils down to what are we legally allowed to do? I think we're all on the same thing, so really it comes down to. Right now, the parking is in the zoning, right? And that, and to make a change, they have to go to the zoning hearing board, which is time and money.
Right.
So, the first question, and Ron, you may have already answered this, can we just take that out wholesale? And move it over to the to the saddle or the land development and put it in there? And have, uh, as somebody else has suggested, a recommended recommended parking. And if I have language in there, not necessarily conditional use, but language in there, that, you know, the supervisor would have the last. Say in the amount of parking that is required, but not more than what is stated in the uh, recommended parking in the ordinance. Just to elim- eliminate the possibility of somebody coming in with a church for five hundred seats and they only want three parking spaces. I don't know, that's an extreme, but that's my point, is there a way that we can do that, Ron?
I I think you can move it over, and of course Scott's here too, and he always has good and great ideas, often better than mine, but. I think you can do that, the only thing I'm struggling with is, if we don't have anything left then in zoning, are we creating some kind of? Monster or gap in the zoning ordinance there if we don't have the parking there too, or at least some kind of parking there, I just. I haven't been able to think it through, I mean, anything you do is gonna require some parking unless perhaps a. A change of use, um, that perhaps will not create anything more, but that would be my only concern, but other than that, yes, you can move it all over into. Saldo, cause Saldo deals with obviously land development of uh, one or more. One or more lots, I think, is the way it's defined, or maybe it's two lots, I'm not sure, I think it might be uh, two lots. Uh, and if that's is, then that's where my concern is on zoning, but I don't see any reason why you can't do that. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, I think you're still protecting the public health, safety and welfare by having it in your ordinance and uh. I think that would be okay.
So Ron, give me an example where they would not come before us for land development, but yet they would be needing, need something in the zoning, would that be? You know, the the wall wall goes away and now Turkey Hills moving in, is that what you're saying?
Well, something like that, I'll I'll rely upon Melissa to maybe put some meat on those buns or tell me I'm wrong, because that could be, but. Something where you're changing, you talked about a church and now the church is gonna go away or the other way, they had a building and. It was some food bank or something that really didn't require a whole lot of parking. People would go through and just drive their cars right through and maybe have a couple of parking spaces for the people who are working at the food bank. And now that's going away and it's gonna become a uh, a church or some kind of religious uh, venue that's gonna require parking. See, I'm not sure if that. If that requires land development, help me out here, Melissa, does it? If you're gonna just make that change on that lot, you're not changing the building footprint, you're not doing anything other than. It's not gonna be a food bank anymore, it's gonna be a church.
It, I I believe it does because it's commercial use, so if you're going from, let's say, a retail use to a church. Um, that was still go through land development, we have several of those.
It depends on the ED, because it's now permitted uses in the ED that you're allowed to switch.
Yeah, but then, but then if you would still switch from a mom and pop to a church in the ED district. The church may require or might require more parking, or the mom and pop may only need three, but the church may need twenty, so that's what that.
Would be, the the short answer is it's self-solving, because the church won't bother going there.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, like, you know, the restaurant.
It's a self, it's a, it's a self fixing.
Right, why would you go to a place where you don't have?
Well, you know, I don't know.
I don't.
I I'm not, well, you know, I thought it was a very naive question, um. But why isn't part of the permitting process and the design process to require a parking analysis?
That's what we're talking about, that's in the.
Good.
Land development.
Well, but but then that throws all of this out, you know, and and it's part of the analysis that they do when they design the building, yeah.
Well, it's one of the same, that's what, that's what would be done, it would be done by the. If it's similar in development pitch, then the suit bodies would be able, if they did, they, the numbers, the front spaces, for some reason, didn't seem to make sense. They'd be able to say, well, why isn't it like that, or why is it different from this, sort of automatically, and they have to demonstrate why, or for these guys to give up, issue a waiver.
Right? You have some guidelines that they compare against.
Well, they'd be able to compare what you have right now with the parts.
Yeah, you don't have to clarify.
We have guideline, wow. Or do you have a part, you stick with the requirements, but you put it in Saldo, which makes it possible to have a waiver.
Yes.
Right?
I was like, damn.
They're still there, the requirements are there, um, but, you know. But I I do worry about a little bit, now I'm the one that brought this, said throw the whole thing away, but I do worry about the the change of use issue. And that I I, there were probably examples out there where a a particular use has very little park needs and the building might work perfectly. And the only thing I worry about is if it was on a road where it was possible to park on the road. And then you might start having issues where they know that, well, I can back park on the road, and then it becomes a traffic concern, right?
I would prefer that all these components here be a guideline, rid of it, um, being absolute. Good way to settle.
Seeing it evolve, so, I just wanted to give just a note of, are you comments on on this, since we only have about seven minutes to go?
Well, the only comment I have is that, uh, whatever we do, we should write into this new ordinance, say, uh, if you're lacking parking spaces anywhere. That you have to direct the overflow to, uh, Barnville four four seven, since they park on the grass anywhere.
Yeah. I just, I I, my personal opinion is I think we're walking a fine line, allowing the developer to tell you what they're gonna do. Uh, I I spent, it it just, it just so happened, this morning I spent fifteen minutes making a circle. To drop somebody off at the doctor's office over there off of four forty seven.
Right.
Where I, there there wasn't a space anywhere. And and there's, I I mean, it was a traffic jam for a while, and you go inside and the office in the waiting room is jam packed. People standing, so, so, you know, I I think it's, I think it's, it's just a fine line you're walking. I I think we gotta be very careful that we don't have a free rein of a developer coming in. And saying, well, your order says this, I'm I'm gonna put this many in, and next thing you know, you have the street parking issue, I I do also agree that. There are places where you're never gonna fill all those those lots up, no matter what happens, even if we use that as an emergency shelter, never fill up all those parking spaces. But, uh, I I just think, a a lot of good talk about it, I I like a lot of what I heard, but just thinking you need to look careful.
Yeah, and I I wanted to say. I don't know if it's such a, it's like a super urgent issue, and maybe the reality is the best way forward is actually. Would also take the time and go through this and really look at what is really necessary, and. And because maybe we're looking for like a quick fix, and maybe there isn't a quick fix. All I would say, I do think eliminating. The multi-purpose facility line, I think that's really important, because I think where I see most of the problems is when it's a big mall with lots of facilities, and that's where. The the parking spaces just add up, and it's hideous, and I I hate to see that in our community going forward.
And those things are fixed at the time of the developer's application. So as the uses change over the years. It's not like you go back in and address parking, it's done at the time, that that's where the trouble comes in, and that's where you can only look so far ahead, you know. And, you know.
Can't be changed, it's redeveloped. You do an analysis for whatever is going to be.
Well, the whole thing is gonna be developed, if you're gonna, if you're just gonna, if you're just gonna swap out.
Use.
Permitted uses, if you didn't let them go back to us, because it's a permitted use. A a hardware store, first of the, you know, uh, we have these, we have strip malls, which two of these doors are closed, ten clothes, and then the next thing that comes in, and that doesn't. Or not that it's huge parking, yeah, right.
Well, even even without a change of use, I think with, that's a good point, I think I know what he's talking about, which is. That whole, you know, complex of medical office buildings and parking lots off of four four seven, some of them are adequate, some are not. The ones that are not are probably places where the new some lose.
High volume.
Medical facilities.
That's right, there's a, there's a next one with a food practice in front of it. And you're talking about coconut eye associates, you know, thirty years ago was was this big, and now that Vitski's got a practice, and they're like, you know.
I I think the one I was talking about was Will's Eye, that was not Will's Eye a year ago, it was some other lower volume.
Right.
Office, that Will's Eye right now, they're just, they're they're a procedure unit that are quick procedure units that can go in and out and.
Yeah, that's the same with the, uh, coconut eye, right, they share that building? Well, there, you're talking about an unfortunate issue, right, because the reality is they probably expanded, and therefore the requirements also expanded, because they're in.
So it's the same side of the building.
You know, there's a number of buildings, it's about number of employees.
It's about numbers, all it is, is numbers, you can have.
And seats, and I'm just, I'm not trying to give them more parking, but. But, oh, less asshole, I mean.
And instead, just to.
I do, I I wanna comment on what Mike, Mike said about us rewriting this, I don't think we should go there. And and I, I love experiencing code and they're always overdesigned, but it 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 does, because. What it does is it takes the responsibility away from the code official, or where the people write it, and that's a good stuff, this is, this is accepted and we all acknowledge that. But by us going back and changing it, now the responsibility is ours, because we said, hey, this church only needs. One parking space for every ten seats, whereas now it's, I'm the same, we'll be able to, so I don't think we should rewrite it, I think we should. Keep it as it is, as a foundation, but allow it to be changed based on the applicant. But going back to what I said earlier, have them allocate future parking if the need changes.
Me a place for.
A place, a place for, this area right here to not be developed with a shed or, you know, anything else, it has to be set by the parking. That way, if another applicant comes in and changes the use or their need changes, boom, now now you you tell them they have.
And I think the incentive of that is to make it count in some way against open space.
You can't do that unless it's impervious and.
Well, you're saying it would be.
Yes.
No, I'm saying it would be impervious, impervious.
Impervious, yeah, or. It doesn't sound like there was at least consensus that we need to reform the process by which we get the numbers and grant relief. Even if we don't get no one numbers we want, does that sound fair?
I don't know, I think the only thing that we all agree on is that, in some cases, parking departments are excessive, and we want there to be more. It easier for the township and then to.
That's a good point.
Right, and then I think the only, for me, the only other lesson learned here is, I would love to know what other. Non-urban ordinances might be out there, not necessarily even in the states.
It's certainly a box or something like that.
And Derek and I say, Missy, is there someone who's a parking patch that we could hear from, so we. We have some.
We also talked about these being guidelines rather than requirements.
Right.
Um, I'll talk to John.
Okay.
About that.
Okay.
Gentlemen, this is Ron, this is Ron talking, I I did not get a chance to look at all those sources that. Lucas has sent to us back, I think in the beginning part of April. Where they talked about the PSAS ordinance, and there was a, I think a fellow from UCLA that had, uh. Recommended reforms or whatever, did any of you read any of those sources, and if so, what would be a good place for me to go read? If you did, if you did not, that's okay.
Uh, strongstrongtowns.org is one, and and planning.org actually has, I pulled it up, it is. If there's that, if planning.org has a nice article on a business case for dropping parking minimum drunk.
But most of these, those pieces are about completely dropping them.
Yeah, but that's all right, we can start there, not about that. Maybe we can start there with the meeting.
Yeah.
No, no, can you send me a link to it?
Yeah.
I I subscribe to strong towns, I get that.
Yeah, too much. Yeah, this is, this is one that I would, that I have, this is American planning association, but I'll I'll, it's also a little outside, you know, it's.
I'll subscribe to that one.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
We're just gonna, are you like, provide. Guidance to the zoning hearing board, it's a completely independent body too, right?
Well, it's a digital body, yes, it's a, well, that's a digital body, so you can.
Are you making it so that your document legally says the township, only wants to make sure you're only putting in the parking.
That's legal, that's the, that's the legislative.
Alright, got it, got it, thanks.
Okay, hearing all that, giving your vote to the chairman.
Make a vote for the chairman.
Robert, you're the second. Second, bottom, Paul Barber.
Hi.